It is my pleasure to invite Reed Saris to come up to the podium. Many of you will remember Reed, he has presented in front of the board before. But I want to tell you a little bit about him because when you look at Reed, you see this very, very young man. And you think, this man could not possibly have done all the things that are on his bio because he's just so, he's just so young. But he really has had a very great career in education so far in being a high school teacher and, you know, taught AP courses and coached soccer. And he's a parent and he's just really invested in education. And because of a friendship that he had back in, in, in his education program, got an idea to found this organization that is just really impressive. He also is an author and I just want to mention that he, his thesis when he graduated from Harvard was, "Our Latest Generation: The Civic Greatness of Young Americans." It disputed the idea that young Americans are disengaged and apathetic and traced political inequalities back to the inequity in educational opportunities. That thesis was also awarded the Hoops Prize for Excellence. And he also authored a paper for Education Trust in 2010 on social innovation. He is just an amazing young person who is marketing and assisting missing students from our most advanced courses. I was struck by his presentation and immediately jumped on the bandwagon almost three years ago now in our discussions. I invited Reed to come and meet with me to talk about what we could do to make sure we could increase the numbers of students of color in our AP classes and our IB programs. I, I think this is important to do on a statewide level. We were able to, to get a cohort of schools and, and different school systems this year. We have five different counties participating, 17 different schools. And I'm happy that Reed is here. I felt it was important for not just us to present this information, but for his legacy and the impetus that he set forth in Maryland and other states, Illinois, that this is an important thing to share and have the founder here to do it. So Reed, with all of that, you're on.
Thank you so much Superintendent Salmon. I have a metaphor to start with. I want to explain why I don't have a suit coat here today. I brought it to the cleaners along with my shirt and tie and slacks. Everything was pressed. I brought it 3,000 miles out from our houseboat in Seattle where you get a lot of rain and things like that. Packed in plastic and put it on this morning and about 20 feet away from the state board office here, car went through the gutter and absolutely drenched me. And so, the reason I bring this up is not only to explain my appearance, but to talk about the significance of the work that we're going to report on here today. And I think the metaphor is you have to be really mindful of those last 20 feet. In, in the history of school reform, we've tried all sorts of things. And, and every decade or two, there's been a major reform effort for the past couple hundred years. And the only reform effort that has been successful and achieved its stated aims is what's called the Common Schooling Movement, as folks may be aware, which really said, "We're doing great things in schools. Let's provide those opportunities to more students, to women, people of color. Let's expand the opportunity set beyond primary education to secondary education and post-secondary." And the challenge of this work now is those last 20 feet of the high school hallway that still to this day divides 750,000 low-income students and students of color from the opportunities they need and deserve. And when we did a competitive process for states to work with us to try to become the first state in U.S. history ever to close access gaps to the most challenging high school courses and fully reflect student diversity at the highest levels of K-12, we were excited by the Maryland partnership, by the engagement of the state team and the state board to really say that Maryland could build on excellence, could build on the set of opportunities that have been created in a really powerful way on a statewide basis through the lens of expanding those opportunities to students who've not yet been served at the highest levels in K-12. And so, that's the work we're doing here and excited to be able to report on that even though I don't have my coat to.
Maryland's a dangerous place.
It is, it is. And so, just a little bit of background on what we're going to be talking about today. As Superintendent Salmon mentioned, we have done analysis of every school and district in the U.S. as a part of the Education Trust paper and research. We've also surveyed almost 30,000 students across the state of Maryland, over 2,500 high school staff members, and compared that to several hundreds of thousands of results nationally. So, we'll get a little bit of perspective from staff and students in, in the state to ground this work. Some of our national partners here. But the, this is where our work and our footprint has grown over the past six years or so. It did start with an experience with my best friend sent off on a different path for no good reason. And then my work as a teacher and administrator in South Carolina with students who were in this position of being just across the hall from the opportunities they need and deserve and has grown rapidly since. To the point where we are working across 27 states in 450 schools. Next year it'll be up over 600 schools, I think. We found 70,000 students and upgraded those students to their high schools' most advanced courses. And in 85% of cases, we've seen stable or increased success rates in AP and IB. Really showing this concept that students are missing out on opportunities they need and deserve to be critical and why leadership is so important to talk about, advocate for, and begin to set policy for a higher sense of what's possible for students who've been historically underserved. The national gap, as I mentioned, about three-quarters of a million students per year. And within the state of Maryland, we're looking at about 16,000 students per year. So, this is the most current state data we have. It's an important chart, so I'll spend a minute with it here. What it does is double disaggregate by both race and income, the statewide participation in advanced high school courses. And so, you'll see the bar farthest to the left, middle and upper income, white and Asian students. As is the case in about 99% of diverse high schools in the U.S., have the highest rate of participation in advanced courses. And then you see lower rates for low-income, white and Asian students, Hispanic and Latino students of all income levels, Black African-American students of all income levels, and all other races as well. And so, this is, this is typical to, to the country and to diverse high schools in the U.S. And this represents the goal that, that we've set in collaboration and partnership with the state of Maryland to close those gaps completely and try to be the first state to have ever done so. A little look at where we've come. Pre-state partnership with Lead Hire, we worked with four high schools in Montgomery County Public Schools. This past year, we expanded significantly to include Washington County, Prince George's County, Calvert, and Dorchester. And then for next year, we've increased participation by another 10 new schools. So, looking at a total of 31 high schools across the state whose superintendents have made the commitment to close these access gaps in their counties just as the state is committing to do so on a statewide basis. We've added 1,600 more low-income students and students of color to advanced courses with these initial cohorts of folks. So, that's about 10% of the national, of the statewide gap. So, it is significant progress and gives us a great opportunity and milestone, as Dr. Salmon was pointing out, to, to check in on the progress and talk about what we've been learning and opportunities for more counties and the state to build on that. So, this is just the single-year comparison of results and participation. It's similar to the previous chart you saw, except the blue bar is the year prior and the green bar is the current set of results. So, you'll see things like an 18% increase in African-American enrollment in AP and IB and a breakdown across groups of the progress. That's the group with the most significant opportunity gap that we want to be closing and, and so we're focused on that in particular. You'll also see significant gains of approaching 400 students in the Hispanic-Latino population accessing advanced courses in the high schools we've been working with.
Can I just ask a question about that graph?
Yeah, absolutely.
So, on the, if I understand it correctly, the, your reference group, the far left, the medium-high income, seems like it's increased from 65 to 68%.
Yes.
If I go all the way to the right and look at the overall change, it looks like that goes up from 52 to 55%. So, the, the percentage changes are the same although with a slightly different denominator. What, show me, show me where the progress is because if the overall change is no, is the same as the change in your reference group, where's the impact?
Yeah, absolutely. So, the, the demographics shift in each of these bars each year. And I think the progress is in the African-American population, 18% increase in a single year and about 400 student increase in the Hispanic-Latino population. And then the 1,600 here references only low-income students and students of color increases in those schools. And yeah, the, there's, there's very funky things with the averages and the disaggregation of groups that happen there.
Dr. Salmon?
Florida as a state some years ago made a major investment in raising the percentage of minority and underprivileged students with access to AP. And one of the challenges was that while the access rates went up greatly, the, the scores of three or higher on the AP did not. Are you tracking actual performance and what, what can you tell us about that?
Absolutely. So, I'll give you this quick example of access and then the next slide will be on performance. So, just one example of James Hubert Blake High School. We see them fully closing the race and income access gaps to advanced courses in a single year, joining that 1% of schools in the U.S. who have done so. They have found at that school, as we've found across the state of Maryland, significant increases in the, in the students passing AP and IB. So, what we've seen so far is a 29% increase in the number of low-income students and students of color passing the AP.
You're using three as a pass.
So, we track this both in courses and in exams. And the Maryland detailed data is in the appendix here. I can, I think you guys have it in your packet. But this is the, this is the sort of detailed breakout that I believe is included in the deck on passing.
That's semester one, that's not the end-of-year exams.
Right. Yes. So, this is the, this is the semester one grades. So, the first cohort of students who are actually in the courses completed them this spring. So, we have the end-of-year exams, which represents the 29% increase, and we do not yet have the exam results. Those will be coming out later this summer. And what we've seen typically across the country, as I mentioned, 85% of schools will maintain or increase the rate at which students are passing these exams. I think Florida is an important example and one we should talk about in the months ahead as we think about where we might go from here. But the, the Florida example, in my estimation, stumbled because it didn't deal with the question of success. There was a sense that at the state level in particular, the state was pushing really significantly for access without respect to thinking about success. I was down there, they were actually a competitor for this Lead Hire state project with us. And the level of, of engineering at the state level to try to implement that policy was really incredible. They had a formula of a, of a percent of a percent of an FTE that, in funding, that went to every school based on access for students. And so, it was really engineered, tightly mapped with, with dollars to really sort of push access in a really heavy way. And I think the problem is that you don't then have the expectations on the part of teachers that enter the classroom and say, "I think kids can do this work. I think this is a thoughtful process that's been set up for success." And then we see teachers differentiating, providing different levels of expectations and things like that. So, it's a great point. I would not advocate a very blunt instrument from state policy standpoint for that. I think even when we've been in Florida, folks have said, "Oh, we tried access," by which they mean that they really pushed in a, in a broad way rather than in a specific and thoughtful way that really brought teacher expectations along with it. Are there questions about the success data we have now?
Well, that's the teacher grade for semester one.
Yes. This is also for, yeah, this is for semesters.
Yes.
Yeah, in four schools.
Yes. Those are the only ones so far to have.
The real proof in the pudding will be when the, in the AP test results come out this, this summer. And I think most of them should be out now. Yeah, the kids, I know my kids have them.
Yeah. Yeah. And, and there's also proof in the pudding in the 450 schools across the country where we've seen those types of results. But it takes time because, so we're getting still those results and looking forward on them.
So, you're doing PD and you're doing various kinds of support so that we get the pass rate increase?
Yes. Yeah, and we'll talk a little bit about some of those specific pieces here. And so, you know, this is, this is just a little bit of a look at the progress through the model. So, the first year, folks working with us do a diagnosis of the, of the system through these surveys of students and staff and analysis of academic record, getting a lot of support on the access side. And then really working to build a support plan for students and staff based on what teachers and students are saying is already working, based on what they're saying is going to be most effective in creating not only access but success in those programs. And so, as an example of some of the types of data that we have, we're seeing a relatively equitable, high set of aspirations around college-going, students of, of every background. Overall statewide, 86% of the students in the schools we've surveyed are aspiring to go on to complete a post-secondary degree. Obviously, the completion rates for college are disparate based on race. And, and we know that the biggest driver of those disparities relates to academic intensity in high school. And so, this is the biggest lever, according to the U.S. Department of Education Research, for boosting college readiness and completion. And what we found in our surveys of tens of thousands of Maryland students is that outside of AP and IB programs, only about 15% of students are reporting that they're being challenged by their courses. This is a very significant statistic and finding. I think that the fact that that is true for low-income students and students of color really is an underpinning for the notion of this initiative of Lead Hire. We talk a lot about what students might not be able to do, what deficits they may have in place, how we, hey, we're struggling to get to proficiency. What we find consistently across hundreds of thousands of students in 27 states is that students of color and low-income students outside of advanced courses are very seldom reporting being actually challenged by their courses. And that's going to trump socioeconomics, that's going to trump eighth-grade scores. The set of opportunities that they get in high school to access college level and college-type work is so important. And we found furthermore that, that teachers feel similarly in terms of the level of rigor offered in different courses. So, we have to move from what we've historically looked at. Here's a student, here's their GPA, here's a couple test scores. That will tell us whether a student's ready for advanced courses or not as the old model. What we've found is that taking an example like the PSAT scores in a cohort of, of our schools, we saw that 80% of the students of color who passed an AP exam were not identified and would not have been identified by PSAT score thresholds that are commonly used to identify student success. So, how, so that's again to the success point. How do you look at who actually passed the exam and where and how they showed up in a traditional measure like the PSAT score? Some of these students from this cohort were missed as a result of not having PSAT scores. But a majority of them were missed as a result of, of having the scores and not having those scores qualify under common cutoffs for identifying students missing from advanced courses. So, this is a result of the surveys of 2,500 staff across the state of Maryland. The dashed lines that you see are national averages, so this fits the national pattern very well. But what we asked students, our staff are, what is a good predictor of student success in AP and IB? Knowing that we need to look beyond things like a test score or GPA. And it's very, very common, as we see here, 85% of staff saying things like student motivation, perseverance, student interest. And so, what we do in our work with them to this point about the Florida example is not say, "Put everybody in there, but let's take a look," sorry, there's a little bit of a display issue on the font here, but let's take a look at this set of information. So, this is actually provided for every student in the schools that we work with. It's called the Student Insight Card. And as you can see, it goes far beyond grades or test scores to really understand those things that teachers are asking for. So, this student in particular wanting to be the first in her family to complete college, wanting to go into computer science. Four teachers on the survey identified Monica as a student with potential to be successful in advanced courses. We've identified a trusted adult in this case, who's someone that Monica said she would go to for advice and really trust their opinion about where, what she should be doing in school and getting ready for college. Barriers that she faces, indicators of readiness, things like growth mindset and other factors, as well as qualitative comments about the fact that there was a struggle early in school related to bullying. But nothing's going to stop her from being the first in her family to graduate from college. So, you can see how a rounded picture like this brings about a much better ability to recruit thoughtfully and create access and success. And so, then this often goes to actually matching with someone like that trusted adult to have a one-on-one outreach conversation with a student like this. And then, just a comparison of staff and student perceptions of why students are not taking advanced courses with a particular focus on students who are underrepresented in those courses. The impression on the part of a lot of staff is that students think it's too much work and maybe they don't want to work for it. The reality for students is that the most common concern they have is that they won't be successful. And so, can we bring specific data? Can we bring trusted adults to talk about the fact that we do believe in you? You can be successful with this type of opportunity. And in closing the gap, show students that students of every background belong at the highest levels and that we believe they can be successful there. So, the second stage is really focused on student experience and success in the courses. That's where we are now with the majority of the Maryland cohort. So, they'll be entering in this, this second stage focused on student belonging and success, growth mindset, and really ensuring we do activations with partners at Stanford to really make sure we're bringing out belonging and, and growth mindset in students and teachers and really ensuring the success piece. And we'll get a lot more data in on that soon. I think the, the gold stars along here are points of district leadership and they may have some significant relevance to state leadership. So, this work began with that first star about committing to close these access gaps and do the Lead Hire work, expecting that, that we could be successful with that, lifting up student voice like we've done with the survey and really talking about that, investing in some of the capacity to be successful. And then things we are going to be looking to the state for in the coming months is really celebrating the success of schools that are, are doing this work. I think that's been incredibly powerful in Illinois, which started a year earlier on this work, to really highlight and celebrate and call out this as the new normal and this higher sense of what's possible. It's, in order to, in order to really be equitably including students of every background and showing that they can be successful, we have to tell that story. The more common story is the one of deficits, failure, dropout, and those sorts of things. And so, that's a key role, I think, for the state as well as the district leadership and then adopting some core policies that can support sustainability. So, I'm not going to dwell on these pieces here, but some of the elements of what the majority of the Maryland cohort will be a part of this year. And then we piloted something called an Equity Leader Lab, which is one of the first communities and environments where educators are able to iterate on, innovate and experience, experiment with new approaches to equity and, and excellence at the highest levels. So, often professional development, as we know, is sit and get. This is about trying new practices with peers, seeing what works and seeing how that drives changes in success and belonging for students. So, a quick example out of our pilots in Montgomery this year that are going to be expanded more broadly across the state. They did an underrepresented student shadow experience. It was one of, we brought in a variety of practices that have been seen as effective. Folks in that group decided, "Hey, we want to, we want to do shadow experiences with underrepresented students." And followed those students through the day. They said, "Three periods is a good period that we can get release. I'm going to, I'm going to observe a, a student." And they came back and said, you know, said things like, "Wow, I had no idea that a student could go under the radar for that long within a, a school building and have no interaction or conversation with an adult. I had no idea that, that things played out like this and that, that this is what class looked like from the perspective of the student." And on the positive side of the ledger, many times I saw these types of practices that were really incredible for engaging students of all backgrounds. And I'm going to bring that back to my classroom and try that in the next couple weeks and then I'll tell you guys how it went. So, exciting to see that moving forward. And then, by way of closing, we're, we're looking forward to thinking about what the implications of this are. I think in a way that's different from how Florida and others have done this type of work in the past. We do think it's about recognizing the outcomes and results, recognizing the leaders that are doing that work and making it possible, starting to connect those folks together through experiences like the Equity Leader Lab, and then distilling and elevating the, the policies and practices. I think the previous presentation on, on really disaggregating outcomes is important and I think we often don't think about that as far as advanced coursework. Again, because the conversation tends in a different direction. But really reporting on approaches that are, that are working and driving significant changes is powerful. In Illinois, as an example, we saw schools in which African-American students were a quarter as likely as white students to be included in advanced courses one year and the next year, 80% as likely. Those folks need to be, I think, recognized by the data and reporting, by the state and others in terms of what's possible. And so, we'll just close by saying, you know, imagining the, the policy and the reality of equitable access to the best of what K-12 has to offer in Maryland is the, is the vision of the Lead Hire initiative. We want to find ways to make equal access the policy of the state of Maryland and really build on some of the concepts that have been outlined a few years ago in a memo by the U.S. Department of Education to make the promise of Brown v. Board and the Civil Rights Act a reality and take what, what the key thing that has worked throughout the history of school reform and apply that at the highest levels of K-12. You have amazing AP and IB programs in this state. And what does it mean to really build on the work of early leaders who are adopting this and say, "As a state, we expect that students of every background will be equally included in those and we know that they can be successful in them." I think will be a path to equity in the state of Maryland and to model policy for the nation. Thank you.
Any questions or comments, Dr. Lee?
Oh.
This seems like a really impressive program. And I was just wondering, it looks like, I'm just wondering about the scaling up opportunities. And are, do you probably have more schools that want to participate than you can accommodate? Or is there a way, because it seems like a lot of what is being proposed is common sense or, yeah, that makes sense. It's just, do you have the wherewithal to do it? So, are there ways to kind of disseminate it in a more public fashion without having to be so selective if they can't get onto your formal program?
Yeah, that's a great question. And we've been working with the state and with county leaders on that. We, I think, do need to have a recruitment push for the next year. I think the goal would be to double the size of the cohort. If we had 50 to 60 schools, as we do in Illinois, which again started earlier, so that's why they have more schools. I think that's an incredible foundation for state policy. We've, we've looked at it and found about 150 of the state, of the schools in the state would be necessary to close the statewide gap. So, I think a group of 50 to 60 schools where we're learning from those leaders, getting recommendations and insights from them, and then creating thoughtful state policy to back that up would be a way towards statewide gap closure. So, yeah, we, we do want to make a push to get more folks the following year involved in this work. But, but it's challenging work and people have a ton on their plate and a lot of initiatives and a lot of things going on. And so, I think people do look to board policy and, and state and otherwise to say, "What's, what's a priority and where do we focus our limited energy and resources?"
Dr. Green?
This is excellent. I'm, I'm excited. My question really ties into what Dr. Lee just said about other schools being able to participate. So, the superintendent, you said, has to commit to doing this before you can start?
Yes.
All right. So, the superintendents, I guess, can light a fire in the center.
I can describe what we've been doing and how I've rolled this out. Really, two and a half years ago is, you know, we, I meet with, Dr. Williamson and I meet with superintendents on a monthly basis. And so, we rolled this program out. Reed came and presented to the superintendents and really gave a great presentation. A little more in-depth in terms of some of the student data, so that really piqued the interest of superintendents. And then, there's a cost to this program, obviously, although there's grant money available that's provided. I also tried to find some incentive money through MSD-E that we could use to entice school systems to defray some of the costs. So, we provided $10,000 per school. So we provided $10,000 per school to entice them to jump on the program. Reed's investors fund, what, $27,000? We fund 10, and that means a school has to come up with $17,000 per school to do this per year. So that's what we're doing. We're trying to, again, find any additional grant funds we can use to sell this again. We'll be talking to superintendents. Dr. Williamson has been like, she's a dog with a bone. And if you said maybe, she calls you five times before superintendents can say no. I mean, she's very dogged about getting more schools involved. And it's our goal to meet this, you know, number of schools with what we can support to at MSD. So certainly want to do more, wish we had, you know, more funding in order to do that. I did also want to make credit to the governor's office. The governor signed off on this initiative almost, what, three and a half years ago?
Yeah, maybe.
Or two and a half, yeah, right. So we're working in partnership with the governor's office on this initiative as well. He's committed to working to make sure these things, these courses are able to be accessed by all of our students.
I think it would really be important, especially in light of your goals, to make sure that counties that have a predominantly black population, you know, be included in this.
Absolutely.
And if by some chance there, the county doesn't, you know, elect to participate, again, I guess I get back to the fact that you have developed strategies and concepts and methods that have been effective, even though the county may not have signed on. Is there some vehicle where you could share with the counties? You know, "No, I know that you're not, counties, I know that you're not going to put up the money, but look, this is what you can be doing, you know, that doesn't cost a lot of money, you know, to have your counselors promote this, to have your teachers promote this, to have the shadowing experience, for example." You know, all those kinds of things can be done because exactly what you're saying in that chart, you know, I just, I marked it and I said, "That's so true." Many times, teachers don't give the kids a chance. They're saying, "Oh, it's too much work. They're not going to do it." But yet the kids are saying, you know, "I didn't have an opportunity."
Yep.
They're willing to do it. So kids will work up to the expectation. So if the counties don't sign on, and hopefully they do, at least those strategies can be shared with them as to what you're doing to make those kids successful. Thank you so much. This is excellent.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Salmon, for getting this to us.
Pastor Phillips, and then Dr.
To that point, you answered actually a lot of my questions. I was going to ask, is there an incentive? So you answered that question. Reed, I like how you highlighted that excellence and equity are inextricably linked. I think that's very important. I noticed that, this is for very selfish reasons, that Baltimore wasn't not on that list of districts that you listed into Dr. Green's point, yeah, and Charles County, where we have a high population of those students who would need this program. Is there, yeah, why not?
That's a great question, and you're referring to Baltimore City? Yes.
Correct.
Yeah. So, yeah, and Charles, yeah. So our program does depend, to not say insignificant degree, on the strength of existing advanced academic programs. So we have, for Dr. Sandalisus, done an analysis of the success of the programs, and they have been working and making really significant strides in improving the teaching quality in those courses and the success and outcomes in those courses. So now could be a good time to reengage.
So you're saying that...
When we last looked at the data, moving students around without a quality AP program to enter is not... There's great programs to build the quality of AP, and we don't focus a lot on that. So they've gained grounds in terms of the success and outcomes in AP, and it would probably be a good time for us to go back and...
So just so I'm understanding, you won't go into a system unless they reach a quality threshold with their existing AP programs?
For the most part, yes.
And Baltimore City hasn't yet met that threshold?
The last time we looked at the data was a couple of years back. So I think from my understanding, they've made some significant progress.
So maybe time to take another look.
Dr. Finn?
Just briefly, I'm a huge fan, and I've been following it pretty closely. But the success of a program like Lead Higher hinges in part on two kinds of capacity in the district or the school building. One is the advanced courses have to be there and be well-taught. And the other is a kind of attitude on the part of the leaders, that we want this to happen. And without those two things there, without the instructional capacity in place and the leadership capacity in place at the district level and the building level, it's too heavy a lift for his program. Now, tell me if I said that wrong, Reed.
No, I think that's right.
What? No, go ahead.
Dr. Lee?
So I have a question about this issue of not being ready to offer the high-quality programs. And I guess this is a question to Secretary Salmon. Is this something that the state can do to have counties that are prepared to work with the counties that are not prepared, so we don't have to wait for the counties that seem like they really need this support to get that support? And I know in my conversations with some superintendents of large school systems that there does seem to be a willingness to assist with online learning or providing access. So I'm just wondering if there's some way that the, at the state level, we could encourage or incentivize counties that have the resources and the offerings to share that with some of the...
I think you make a good point, or several good points. And one of the things we've tried to do through our superintendents' meetings is set up opportunities for the superintendents that are currently engaged in the programs to talk to the superintendents that aren't, and to really give specific examples of the benefits of the program. So we've done that a few times. We plan on doing that again this year. And then I think the other thing we plan on doing is establishing this collaborative that Reed is talking about, where we can do a little bit about what Dr. Green's talking about so that we can share strategies and really see if we can ratchet up some of the programs that we have in other...
Right, but it's not just sharing the strategy because some counties are not able to, they don't have the resources, but they really...
I think counties have the resources. It's where they decide to use their resources. So let's be perfectly clear, Baltimore City spends just about the third highest or the second highest amount per student. There are issues with concentrated poverty that we've certainly talked about in the Kerwin Commission. But systems make choices about what they offer to students.
Okay, but I guess I was thinking, is there the demand to teach AP Calculus BC in a Baltimore City school? Maybe there's not enough students to justify a teacher, so it's hard for them to prioritize that. But in another county, there may be 60 people signed up for Calculus BC, and so they have at least one or two instructors that are trained and do this. I guess I'm just wondering about the possibility of sharing those kinds of resources that are infrastructural and would take a long time to fix or address in a place like Baltimore City.
Yeah, again, it's about the local control of that school system and what choices they make for how they set up their programs. We do a lot, on the eastern shore, we do a lot of sharing of programs, you know, in my past history. You don't see that as much as some of the larger counties, but there are ways to do it. I had one student in BC Calculus. He did it online with Johns Hopkins. So, I mean, there are ways to do this. It has to be a commitment and a desire to want to do this for your kids, in my opinion.
So this is a...
Steiner, and then we're going to have to wrap this up.
It's a very, very complicated issue. My institute did a detailed research paper on Chicago, which instituted the IB at scale across its high schools to very good effect.
Closing the black-white achievement gap, leveraging...
Really extraordinary. And part of the challenge here is that you, you know, it's the old ad about Guinness, "I don't like it because I haven't tried it." In many cases, the problem is belief. Once the Chicago leadership made a serious, system-wide commitment to the IB for complicated reasons, I think rightly, they chose it above the AP. A lot of folks rose to the occasion. Now, there was support, but there was, actually, the research we did showed that the cost wasn't substantially higher. They repurposed their PD dollars. They had been misusing PD dollars on generic PD that didn't do any good to anybody. I'm generalizing, professional development. Professional development to teach AP is critically important, but it didn't cost more to use those dollars usefully than unusefully. So part of this problem, and I deeply respect the work you've done, and I know it too, but part of it is that Baltimore City may never think it's ready, right? And that's a very complicated issue that goes very deep into social psychology and history and race relations. So at some point, the whole thing may need to get a nudge even before it thinks it's ready.
Any other comments? It's a great discussion, I'm sure one that we're not going to end here. Ms. Halli, you want to say anything? You sure? Okay, thank you. You've obviously given us a lot to think about.
Thank you, Reed, and thank you for coming from so far away and getting so...
Hope you find a good dry cleaner.
We'll pay the dry cleaner. Find all of those last 20 feet together.
That's right.
We'll whip around for a dry cleaning.